Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting Thursday, June 18, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Present.
Commissioner Menier?
Present. I came always the last, right?
So far.
It's alphabetical.
I know. Okay. Consent calendar. Before we make a motion to that, is anybody else has any comments? Anything you want to delete or change or anything?
No.
None?
Thank you.
Okay. Just a reminder that items listed here as a consent calendar items are considered routine, and whatever that means, routine means, and will be acted upon collectively by one motion, adopting the planning department's recommendation. Unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. Since I didn't hear anybody wants to remove any items, so I'm waiting for the motion.
I motion to approve the action minutes of the May 11 meeting in 2017.
Second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
Consent calendar.
Okay. I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So move. At this time, we will open up the oral communication. And I see a big audience here, so we will close it very quick. I mean, five minutes. We allow infinite time here. The limit is 15 minutes.
Quick question. Are we required by law to keep the oral communications open for a period after the meeting starts?
No, once you open it and seeing no one, you close it. And if somebody comes later at the pleasure of the commission, you could reopen it if you chose.
Okay, thank you.
If someone shows up later on. Okay, so we close the oral communication, written communication. I got this Bay Area Monitor collaborating for the Clean Air. And this will become more and more important as we go through the Trump era. So we'll see how far we go with this battle. And then I got this one-page memo response to the city council to hold a workshop with all appointed commissions and committees. Everybody got that? That was part of the package or not?
Yes, it's part of the package. It's one of the commission items. It's on for discussion later this evening.
Item number one, section I. That's actually not written communication, I think, but...
It's a memorandum, but...
No, it's items.
It's item I.
Items.
Item one from I, section I.
Yeah. But it was not part of my package also, so I just saw it here.
Yeah, it was part of the electronic.
Yeah.
And was this was also the part of the package?
It's items initiated by commission.
Yeah. Now, this particular memorandum was also a proposal to change regular planning commission meeting schedule.
That's also items initiated by commission.
You don't have to worry about noting this. Okay? And then we will start the new business. Public hearing on general plan amendment, GPA-1-17, and zoning text and map amendment, RZ-1-17. I'm not going to read the rest of it. I will let the staff continue with that. So your pleasure.
Actually, I'm going to leave the lights up since there's nobody to see the screen, and you have your screens here. So, yes, it's General Plan Amendment, GP 117, and zoning text map amendment, RZ 117. And these applications are before you tonight.
It's not coming up on our screen here.
Sorry.
Perfect.
Okay.
And there's just a couple slides here, since this is essentially a review.
Yep.
So these applications were initiated by the city and are to amend the 1994 general plan land use element as it pertains to the northwest Bay Shore subarea, and to amend the zoning ordinance within that same area to achieve consistency with the general plan. By way of background, in 2015, city council adopted a resolution of intent to initiate zoning amendments to bring the terminology used in the zoning ordinance for the M1 zone into conformity with the terminology used in the general plan. As the commission will recall, there were a few different areas within the city that were zoned M1. These were northeast Bay Shore, or R, some were, some are, northeast Bay Shore, northwest Bay Shore, southeast, and southwest Bay Shore. The planning commission began with study sessions on these areas starting in January of this year, and the commission recognized that multiple areas zoned M1 are diverse and have very different site and land use characteristics. As such, the commission concurred with addressing each of these geographic areas separately. For the southern Bay Shore areas, on May 17, city council adopted the ordinance to rezone the properties from M1 to TC2, trade commercial, and to open space, and that's consistent with the commission's recommendations. Also, as we discussed before, northeast Bay Shore is being addressed separately in the ongoing Baylands planning process. That leaves northwest Bay Shore, which has M1 zoning at its northern end. That's the area of PG&E Martin Substation and the Seven Mile House Bar and Grill. In the central and southern portions of the subarea, the zoning is planned development. At the previous study sessions and the public hearing in April, the commission took a holistic look at the northwest Bay Shore subarea, given its diversity with development on the south end, vacant in the middle, and again PG&E at the north. Just a refresher, the northwest Bay Shore subarea encompasses approximately 87 acres. It's bounded by Guadalupe Canyon Parkway to the south, Bay Shore Boulevard to the east, and the border with Daly City to the north and west. It includes the 10-acre Technology Park at the southern end, the vacant central area of Levinson and Peking Handicraft. Those are about 31 acres for those two sites, and the 32-acre parcel of PG&E Substation and Seven Mile House at the north end. During the previous sessions, the commission indicated support for the following approach. For the south area, the general plan and zoning would be amended to extend Crocker Park, TC, trade commercial area, over the Brisbane Technology Park, since it's been developed consistent with Crocker Park in terms of both the development regulations and uses. There would be no changes to the zoning text necessary for that south area. For the central area, it would be renamed from northwest Bay Shore to Guadalupe Hills. Although it would be renamed, it would retain the existing PD SCRO designation, which again is planned development, subregional, commercial, office, retail, as well as the planned development zoning, and the requirement for a specific plan, as we discussed in the last meeting. Also, the policy which indicated that the city is open to mixed-use development would be retained. So that area would be changed in name only. There would be no changes to the zoning since already zoned planned development. And then lastly, for the northern area, the PG&E Substation and Seven Mile House, a new commercial public utilities land use designation would be added to the general plan, and it would be rezoned from M1 to CPU for commercial public utilities. That area would retain the northwest Bay Shore subarea name to reflect its geographic location within the city. So in essence, the uses would be narrowed from the currently broader uses under the SCRO designation. And the zoning ordinance would include that, a new CPU chapter, and that's Chapter 1722, as reflected in the staff report. And likewise, the zoning map would reflect the change to CPU. And these amendments are all shown in your draft, in the draft amendment and ordinance, and I'm happy to take questions on any of these, if you have any further at this point. But in closing, staff recommends the planning commission adopt Resolution GP 117, RZ 117, which provides a recommendation to city council to adopt the proposed amendments to the general plan and to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions for the staff?
Oh, one last thing, if I may add. John reminded me here. So Commissioner Mackin had emailed us earlier today. She caught a typo on page G124 where I refer to the Levinson parcel, the edge of it being contaminated. I had indicated south. It's actually north, so we will change that. And then she asked a question about if, and I'll just read it here, if housing was removed from the Guadalupe Hills subarea, would this exclude any properties from being used as a land use density transfer? And the answer to that is that the density transfer provisions would not apply to this area. We do have density transfer provisions within the Brisbane Acres that is intended to allow for more open space in the higher quality habitat areas in exchange for higher density development in the lower acres, where there's little or no habitat on a particular property. But it wouldn't apply here. Essentially, the density, there's no density that's specified, and that would be set by the specific plan and planned development applications, so it wouldn't have an impact on that. So if you have further questions?
Well, actually, then I have three.
Okay.
If you'll just endure my madness here. So the density transfer, I understand, applying to the acres. Is there anything in the foreseeable future that perhaps that could be applied to that Guadalupe Hills subarea in that some of the terrain is really steep, and perhaps the density then could be transferred to a buildable area? Because I'm not sure what mechanics went into place to allow the density transfer with the acres.
I think there are kind of two facets of that. One is that, you know, the acres as being a situation where you have pre-existing legal parcels and lots that have development rights and whatnot. So there's a, you know, a desire maybe to make, sort of incentivize certain kind of property exchanges to the benefit of the habitat out here. And this property, you know, there is no, as Ken mentioned, there's no density, so there's no right, development right, that can be transferred or exchanged, that move somewhere else. So there's just not a tool to do that. The other issue is that through a specific plan, you know, part of that environmental process would identify sensitive habitat areas on site, and what you would probably be doing, you know, in a development that looked at the entire area is not so much a matter of transferring the density away, but clustering. You know, you might say, well, this area can be developed and, you know, allow, if you want to allow some more intense development, to allow for more property to be preserved on that same property or in that same area. That would be, we'd consider more of a clustering, and that's, again, not, it's not by code. You'd be doing it as by the planning effort through the specific plan based on the environmental study for a site-specific development.
And are the, are there actual delineations of where the habitat is?
The 2001 open space plan actually did map out areas that were identified with habitat resources, both on these properties as well as on the acres. And so that was really, for the acres, density transfer, that was, I think, the impetus to do the density transfer ordinance. But as John said, in this case, it would be just a different tool to accomplish the same goal, of preserving habitat.
Okay. And then also, in the final resolution, there's nothing there that discusses the retention of specific plan and planned development, although you've noted that in other parts of the redlined amendments. And I would assume that by this draft resolution, it's implied that the current conditions are retained, which requires both, so there's no need to mention it. Is that true?
That's exactly right.
Okay. And I have one final thing, and I'll get out of here. On page G1.73, under policy GH.18, it says, "Consider the concept of live-work residential development." And referring back to our previous red line, it had a notation that said this was a discussion point. And excuse me if I'm, just do not remember, but I don't remember discussing that. So I wondered if we could entertain a discussion of the commission on that.
So as I recall, so the mixed use essentially is allowing for housing. And so the discussion point comment was just a comment in the last study session. And the takeaway, as I recall, was that we had two commissioners that wanted to keep it as it was, and two commissioners who wanted to have it removed. And so since there was not a majority to change it, that it would stay as it was.
Okay, but the designation here specifically mentioning live-work residential development is a different characterization than purely residential.
This is the same language from the 1994 general plan.
Is it? Oh, okay. Okay. Because I thought you were alluding to what we modern day refer to as live-work developments, which are a bit different from where you might have retail below and housing above. It's not an objection. I'm just looking for clarification.
Well, I think, again, based on the lack of sort of majority interest to change any of the language, we just left it as it is as a placeholder, certainly tonight as part of this public hearing. If you choose to do something different, that's your prerogative, but we just left it as it was.
Okay, thank you.
And since everything is conditional use anyway, nothing is expressly allowed, correct?
It would all be subject to the actual applications that came in, so it's all discretionary.
And all of this will be part of the design review, right, John? That will all be subjective, the comprehensive design review?
Well, again, let's just, you know, we can all, just so we're all real clear, the requirement is first for a specific plan and then a PD permit. Those are discretionary permits. There wouldn't necessarily be a third discretionary permit of a use permit, and I'd expect the design review would be covered under a PD permit, so.
Okay.
But there's ample or many opportunities for discretionary review, just maybe not by all the tools that you've just mentioned.
So this particular policy does allow a residential element to this area?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else has any questions? Commissioner Anderson?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. This is pretty straightforward. We're not changing very much at all. And...
But to Colleen?
Yeah.
I think that for a new fresh...
Yeah, of course, of course. Yeah, I'm not done yet. Still going on. Okay, so thank you very much, Commissioner Mackin.
Thank you.
I must appreciate that you spend a lot of time reviewing this, and I'm learning quite a bit from you.
Well, I learned from all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for correcting some of the things here. So what's your pleasure? Should we go ahead and adopt this resolution and send it to the council?
I have no objections to what was being...
Yeah, but you still have to make a, we still have to make a motion to adopt the...
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I have nothing else I want to add to this, so I have no objections.
Okay.
If you could indulge us too, although we clearly don't have an audience, this is a formal public hearing, so you would need to open and close the public hearing in advance of an action.
Yeah, this is one of those procedures we have to go through. Okay, we'll open up a public hearing. Give, what, three minutes?
No.
You don't hear anyone?
No. There's no one here.
I'd like to motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just wanted to make sure that public is...
That's why I asked the question earlier. How long do we need to have this open?
Okay, so let's go ahead and make a motion. Who wants to take the lead?
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution GP 117, RZ 117, recommending that the city council adopt the amendment updating the land use element pertaining to the area currently defined as a northwest Bay Shore subarea of the 1994 general plan and related zoning consistency amendments.
I second that.
Karen Kenny, second this. All in in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion moves. Very quick today, huh? It's going to be a very quick meeting.
Don't ever say that. Don't ever say that.
Items initiated by the staff.
Nothing really too critical. Just a reminder, there is another council. It's more of an informational workshop on next Thursday, the 15th. I think the speakers are all, is not really directed at the Baylands, it's broader kind of sustainability principles that might be applicable to the Baylands, but it's not really a hearing on the Baylands. But there should be some pretty interesting speakers. It will be televised and viewed, and so if you couldn't make it next Thursday, you could certainly have the opportunity to view it, so I just wanted to...
It's about, it's the same time, 7:30 or?
No, it's either 6:00 or 6:30. I apologize, I don't recall.
6:30.
6:30.
Are we putting out extra memos to the general public that this is happening?
It'll be, there'll be a blast. It's been sort of teased before, but it'll be blasted tomorrow on the city's website and through, and you know, it's on our various mailing list, email list.
Thanks.
And that's all I have from the staff. Oh, there was one question. You had, everyone had received an email from Planner Capasso about scheduling and whether there's going to be any schedule problems for the summer with people being gone or absent or whatnot. So if you have the opportunity to look at her email or let us know about if anyone's going to be gone on vacation or whatnot, so we can verify we're going to have a quorum for the meeting, so if you could get back to us, we'd appreciate that.
Okay. Yeah, I did get the email. I haven't responded yet. Anything else?
Nothing, staff.
Okay, then move on to the items initiated by the commission. And in this respect, first one is a request for the city council to hold a workshop with all appointed commissions and committees regarding meeting procedures. You all have that, right?
Correct.
You guys want to discuss anything on this, or it's just a draft letter?
I actually think it would be appropriate that if anybody on the commission wanted to add anything to that letter or change something on that letter, that's what we should be doing. Other than that, I'm very happy with the...
I think...
Thank you.
Yeah, I still think this is a good idea, and I don't see anything that I feel needs to be added to the letter.
I think the letter is very well-written, I think, or covers pretty much everything.
Yep.
So we don't have to take any action. Go ahead and...
Yeah, we'll go ahead and finalize it for the chair's signature and deliver it to the mayor and the council.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. The next item is proposal to change regular planning commission meeting days, and I think that request was by Commissioner Anderson because of the scheduled conflict that you had with your work or whatever.
Yes, well, I definitely recognize what the staff said about the scheduling being a very sensitive matter. I wouldn't put this forward at the great inconvenience of anyone, but if it does happen to be at least equivalently convenient for everyone, I'd find it to be a great improvement for my own schedule.
Frankly, I don't have any problem changing to Tuesdays unless...
I have no problem either, actually. It's a little more convenient for me also, so thank you.
Happy.
Yep.
We like you very much, so we decided to go ahead with the changes.
Colleen?
I have no problem with it as well.
Okay, so when can, when this will be effective, you know?
Well, that's probably, the next thing we would need to talk about is when do you want to make that change? We haven't, we've advertised, well, certainly through the end of July, end of June. When would the commission want to effectuate that change?
Do you want to do it after summer or?
I have no particular scheduling desire about when, when it happens, what's most convenient compared to like what we've already announced and the new commissioners coming in and stuff.
Right. For me, as soon as possible, because my, I do book my calendar on a daily basis, so the sooner we can make a decision, the better for me.
Okay. I think the earliest we could probably pull it off is the first meeting in August. I think July, we have some tentative scheduling issues that we've already somewhat committed to. So if that's okay with the commission, we'll shoot for, for doing that effective, the first meeting in August. And we'll have to send out, we'll do is send out a new calendar when we send out the resolution. So what we'll probably end up doing too is because, and as you're aware from our last discussion, we are looking at changing some of the other commission procedures. I think to expedite this particular change, we'll just introduce this at your next meeting and have you adopt it, and understanding that we'll come back with a more holistic list of changes to your rules and procedures separately. I don't want to hold you changing your schedule until we go through more. It could be, you know, more of a 60-day process to kind of vet all that with the city attorney and come back with you, so. So, you know, we'll come back with two different amendments to our rules, one just for the date.
Yeah, that will be fine.
Okay.
So anybody agree to that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And in the interim, we'll go ahead and advise the council of your intent. Again, if you get any reaction that you need to be aware of, it will certainly be relayed back to you, but the rules are yours to amend, so.
So not until August, then?
That was when we'd make the change.
Okay, the first meeting in the August?
Yeah, we'll bring it, when we bring it back next time in terms of the rules, we'll say effective, whatever the date is, and so.
I think there will be some holiday schedule in July anyway. Some of the people will be taking some time off, right, in, during summertime?
By some coincidence, my time off misses all of the meetings.
Oh, really?
Mine too.
Okay. So, anything else? Staff has done that with the commission. I did send you the copy of the items that need to be addressed at some point. It was, last, I forgot to mention that in the last meeting, that I received that from Ray Miller. And I reviewed that, and I thought that there's several items that we can discuss, and there is no urgency to do it tomorrow, but I think we should start thinking about that, and if anybody has any problems or concerns or anything, maybe they, we can address it as we go along with each of the items that are there.
I would suggest, maybe just, it might be easier if, again, on a meeting that's relatively light, one of the upcoming meetings, we put that whole list, you know, as a commission item, because, you know, I don't want to get into the ins and outs of that, but a lot of those items are actually not driven by the staff. They're private applications, so, you know, just so everyone's aware of, you know, which items the staff and the city can really initiate and move forward on our own versus which ones are driven by private application. So just so you're aware of that and if that shapes...
I'd like to see that list, by the way.
Oh, I think Commissioner Menier...
I sent to everyone.
No, I don't have it.
It was an email correspondence. I just received a copy of it myself. It wasn't part of the packet, it came...
No, I send the email to everyone.
I'm sorry, I don't have that email.
Would it be possible for you to get the copy for her or send it to her?
Well, we're going to agendize the issue, so we'll make sure everyone has it, you know, as part of it, because then it'll be on the, in the record, and then the public can access it and all the commission. We'll make sure, though, yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to send it now so that everybody has an opportunity to think about it, what we're going to do, and I want to give enough time for us to review that, and since it's going to affect your schedule and as well as... And since it's going to affect your schedule and as well as some of the items will come to the commission, so I think it's very important that we look at it and see which one are the private items, which are the one that we can do. And what I will do is, at some point, I will meet with John and go over all those items. Meanwhile, I'm sorry that you didn't receive it. I think I did send to everyone and I apologize for that if I didn't, didn't receive it.
No, it's okay. I just, you know, if we're going to be looking at stuff that's sent to us by the general public...
Yeah.
As suggestions as to how the planning commission should behave, then I think I should have that list as a...
I don't think, I don't think it was more as a behave, what it was, was open items and some of the items that need to be, you know, it's like a house cleaning.
Yeah, but it's still something that's sent by, you know, a member of the public...
Sure.
Trying to direct the planning commission's behavior, and so I want to see what that is.
Definitely.
Isn't the usual process that someone would approach staff through the chair and then it would be agendized and staff would send an email to all of us?
Yeah, in this particular case.
But you got it and I didn't?
Yeah, I got it. And your email address was on the list.
Well, for some reason, I didn't get it. Let me just say it again.
You have several emails, I have three, at least two or three. And the one probably, I sent it to you, maybe it was not an active email.
That's okay.
So if you can kindly send your active email to me, I'll send it to you.
Um, you should have that, it's listed publicly.
Yeah, because I was confused which one we were to send, so I just picked one.
Okay.
I think it was Gmail, probably.
That's correct. Karen Cunningham, 2011@gmail, you can get me for anything.
Okay, so...
That'd be different.
So I will get together with you at some point and then we will see when we can agendize this.
Well, I would just suggest that I'll do, if it's okay with the commission is that you have that memo or that list.
Yes, yeah.
I would just call that an item initiated by the commission, consideration of that, and I'll attach it to an agenda. It may, the 22nd might be a little busy, so, and, because again, the idea of probably collectively, so the commission understands, once you've seen, everyone's seen the list and they understand which applicants are, which of those projects have, you know, where they stand and who's responsible for moving them forward and whatnot, and then you can have a conversation about if you have a priority on those. And then, then there's a whole discussion about whether or not the kind of effort that would require council authorization. And again, what you'd be doing then is recommending the council direct staff to do something. You know, that's part of this give and take we have to have in terms of, you know, staff's time and what tasks we undertake. But, you know, once you see the list and we can kind of parse through it and understand what you're most interested in, it'll, we can work through it.
Yeah, I think it's a good starting point to, because when a previous planning director left, there were a lot of, a lot of things were left kind of halfway, we didn't finish it. And I think this will try to, we try to clean up the old stuff that's not being done. That will be my first priority. And then we can discuss the new items that are coming forward. Okay? Anybody has any other things to add?
Well, yes, I do. I think it's very interesting that, you know, outside people want to direct the planning commission in what, how we should spend our time. But we have issues that are first and foremost coming from City Council and staff that have to take priority. That's why I want to see this list. And I think it's great, I think it's awesome that, you know, people who are not part of the commission or the City Council or any committees have ideas about what we should and shouldn't be doing. But I, I think the prioritization doesn't come from outside as it comes from City Council, staff and us. So that's my comment.
I think I disagree with your rationalization of that. I don't think this memo was, or this list was kind of telling or dictating us what to do. It was just a suggestion, not even a suggestion, but the items that that particular individual thought that it was left out or hasn't been addressed for a long time. So, you know, I look at it as an add to us in terms of what undone businesses we have. I don't think there was any intention on the part of the private citizen that they want to dictate what the planning commission should do or direct us as to what the planning commission do. The whole idea was that that particular individual, and I thank him very much for doing that, took his time to go through all the items that were open items. And his idea was that this is an open item, then planning commission do whatever they want to do. I don't think there was any suggestion here that you must do this or these are the things I like to see. There was no such thing. It was just an items that were not completed. So I think we should be, we should characterize it correctly, that this, this particular list was, has no intention that they were trying to direct planning commission what to do or force planning commission to do anything. It was just basically a list that that individual thought that some of these items, we should look at it. And we have, and also in the spare time, we don't have to do it, drop everything and look at that. We can agenda as, we don't have to do the whole list at one time. We can look at each item and maybe slip in and whenever we have time, and many of the meetings that there is, agenda is short, maybe we can address one of those items. So I think we should give the credit to what it is, what the person deserves. And I think the intention was not that they're trying to direct or dictate planning commission what to do. Anybody else wants to add to that? My characterization of this particular list, I think it's just to be, to help us, go ahead.
If I may, through the chair permission, I would just say we could debate this all night. And I think that it may promulgate more members of the public coming forward, past council members, maybe the council themselves, to say there are a couple other things, it provokes some thoughtful discussion and there's no harm. We may have members of the public come forward at a future meeting and mention things. If nothing else, addressing it will satisfy some questions the public may have about whatever happened to this and how come it's not been addressed. So I don't see it as a negative. I would hope that we could just embrace it as something that could be productive and leave it at that.
Yeah. Plus, my opinion is...
Sure, absolutely.
Plus, my opinion is that we serve the public. And public has every right to suggest something to us. We don't have to take their suggestion, but at least discuss, you know, and give them the opportunity so that they know that we, we are concerned about what items they have on their mind. And if they take time to bring it before us, we should acknowledge that. And that's what we...
No argument, no argument on that, at all.
So let's do that, John. We stay in touch with that particular items and, so the way I want to do it is just bring the list and the next items and then we could go through very quickly each of that, we're not going to discuss it one night. Okay? Anything else? That's it for time to, time to go home, I guess. So I'm looking for motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of June 22nd, 2017, at 7:30 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, the motion move.
Thank you.
On June 22nd.